Screen. That you're just here to report for later?
Yeah.
We should make that statement.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Burlington School Board meeting for Monday, May 20th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening. Due to technical issues, this is not being broadcast live, but it will be, has been recorded and will be presented later. First up is the adoption of the agenda.
So we?
Motion in, sorry, second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign and the adoption is, agenda is adopted. Next up is the Burlington presentation from Burlington High School. Good evening. We have a few people in the crowd this evening. It's nice to see everybody. Come, please come forward, Ms. Myers. Ms. Myers.
Tonight we have the IJAG program is here and Jeff Woodside is, leads the IJAG program. And these are students who are going to present.
You guys can grab a seat, let's sit down. Jeff, you pull one of those chairs up there.
If anyone pull a chair up here. So, like, sorry. Like I said, my name is Jeff Woodside. This is actually coached in the district for the past eight years. My first year in the building as IJAG specialist. But I asked a few students to come and just kind of talk about what we've done over the course of the year and kind of where the program's headed into the future. I'll turn it over. First, I'll let you introduce yourself, but Dimitri.
Good evening. My name is Dimitri Donald and I'm the president of the IJAG program. Like Mr. Woodside said, it's our first year. Some things that I've got to do is run for campaign and got to run against some of my classmates and stuff for, you know, the president role. And things that we got to do is like go up to Des Moines and compete at CDC and LDC. So LDC, basically I competed against other kids from other schools and it was a resume and a cover letter. So they took like a top 15 from like-
Across the state.
Across the state and I made it to-
Nice.
LDC. And just had like a mock interview with employers and stuff and like workshops and everything to basically try to train for real world after high school.
Very cool.
Awesome. Hey, my name is Azalea Kianis and I'm the vice president for social awareness for IJAG. Um, I can, we did like a huge, huge campaign about, I guess, everybody should choose our roles. Um, we did a few projects in the class that help us with our future. We did portfolios, which we made resumes. We all talked about how to budget for an apartment when we all grew up with our job that we want to do. We did surveys and we, when we did the surveys, we came up with the top job and the top job we chose for the, like the price range for everything else.
You got to see how expensive everything was.
Yes. We had to budget from all the way that, and then budget from the, pay for our student loans too. For when we go to school, how long did it take us for school?
Hello, guys. Um, my name is Bernard Woods and I've been in the IJAG program for all three trimesters. And something we've got to do this year, we got to go on field trips. And one of the field trips, we went to SEC, Western Illinois. We went to Pun City. We got to meet Rob and we got to thank the tour of Pun City. And we went to, what should we go to? I don't remember. I'm sorry. But, um, yeah, so, um, yeah, I really liked those because I think like the college villages and stuff, it really can like help me, the IJAG community and like the program can help students like get a more feel like the college and like see what they want to do in their life. Because I'm a junior or BHS, so like, I feel like now like I want to go to college. I can like see and like help and ask Woody for help. But like if we go on college tours and like speak to like the research officer or whatever. And yeah, I just think that's a great, this is a great opportunity for people and young kids. Uh, VHS can get into that program. So, yeah.
So what does, um-
Sure.
So what does your instructor do for you? How does he help you be successful?
He helps us guide our way for where we want to be, what we want to do after high school. He helps us do surveys and figure out what our interests, what we like in our interests and figure out what we want to do after. So then after we figure out, we figure out like a school pathway that leaves the school, if we go to trade school or something.
Okay. Same for you or anything else?
Yes.
So we approved earlier this year, just a month ago, we approved adding a nine and 10, 12, nine, 10th grade program. So there'll be two IJAG specialists next year and I'm assuming that sounds really beneficial. If you were, if you were, if you were going to say yes or no, do you think that's going to be good for us?
Yes.
Yeah?
It's gonna be great.
So what did you, tell me the difference between what he thought IJAG was going to be and what it's actually turned out to be?
Well, I thought, when Woody came to me when I was a sophomore, he got in with me and it was like, this is a class like just going to see like what I want to do after. I was not like, I'm not, I don't know. So like, uh, so like my first trimester, when we have, what Dimitri was talking about, the running for like the campaign, I really thought that was a very exciting opportunity for me, like to see like what I want to do in my career path. And like, I think that's a great opportunity for students to see. And like if they like running or like whatever, we did multiple career events throughout the trimester. Like what President was talking about, the resume and like we had to pick out your apartment and like see how much you've got to budget and all that. And like, I just feel like it could like help students and motivate them to see like what they want to do. As we do all these different stuff throughout the trimester and planning and all that.
When it was told to me, I didn't know what it was. I was confused. But the once we got more into it, they, when Woody, Woody like introduced us to it, we all got more of a feel of what it was and how to benefit ourselves in the future.
I mean, what I thought it was, Iowa jobs for Merica's graduates. I thought I was just going to get a job after graduating. It just really taught me like, like skills, really, like employability skills and like getting me ready for like the real life world after high school, like the budget and stuff and everything. Like it just gives you skills that regular high school doesn't give you. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say. Like you're not in a class learning about social studies, what happened 200, 300 years ago. You're learning about like what's going to come towards you or to you after you graduate, you know? So.
So you realize that money does not grow on trees.
Yeah.
And then apartments can be super expensive. Yeah? Did any of you have to change jobs? Like were you going in going, this is what I'm going to do? And then through a survey, it told you something different?
No.
No? Okay.
Helps you get to, helps you get organized, how you're going to get there?
It's awesome.
How many from the program?
Um, over the course of the year, the students had 38. Now, they haven't all been in there all three trimesters.
So you could do just a trimester then?
We've done, I think the vast majority, vast majority have been in two, either two or three trimesters. There's a couple that came in here the, the end of the year, but, um, yeah, 38 total this year. With a goal of between 50 and 60 next year. So.
Can you talk a little-
Is my goal.
In, in your program?
In my program, yes.
And in addition to the one we're starting, excellent.
Can you talk a little bit about how you follow after the senior year?
Sure. Um, so after, so like Dimitri's the only senior, um, as far as she was here. But we have a year of follow-up. So I will touch base with students on a monthly basis for a year post-graduation. Just to check in, if nothing else, just see how they're doing, if they need anything, if they need any help. Just kind of as a resource to them. For those that do go into the working world, I will check in with supervisor or boss to make sure they're showing up on time and they're doing everything that they're supposed to do as well. Just to kind of help, help facilitate success after, after graduation.
Awesome. That's cool.
Yeah, that's great. So did you have to go recruit everyone for your program?
This year, yes. Um, come who, let me take that back. So when I, I was hired last May, so towards the end of the year. So I had an opportunity to meet with, I had a list that the counselors had put together. Had an opportunity to meet with the vast majority of those students. But it was last two weeks of the year, so it was kind of hit and miss. This year and going into next year, then yes, had a, had a chance to, or have had a chance to meet with students, kind of build a roster for next year. They have done a great job of advocating for the program.
I was going to ask that next, if you would recommend.
Yep. So a lot of those students that have, have reached out to me will be a part of the program next year.
Good.
Do you guys feel prepared for adult life after high school?
Yeah.
Yes, a little bit more than I was, yeah.
Right. Dimitri, you're the only senior. Can you share what your plans are post-high school?
Uh, so my plans are to attend Lower's College for majoring in finance. Going to play football up here, so.
Wonderful.
I really, I really like, part of the program I do like is the extra year where it's, you know, somebody where even a student goes to a certain college and then doesn't stay, right? And then they December, who do I talk to? Well, you just reconnect with your IJAG instructor and they say, okay, well, let's, we're, what's our second choice now? What are we going to do? Let's get your resume if you want to work or go to a different college or things like that. I think the benefits that we'll see benefit a lot of kids, because a lot of kids make choices when they go to their first opportunity out of, out of high school, so.
Every kid could benefit from this program, every kid.
And this seems like it's, I would say, almost 100% more successful than the last time we tried to go with this particular program. So I'm really excited about that. Because this is, yeah, this is way better than- I think the instructor has a lot to do, but really it's about building leadership skills within the students. So when you guys agree, is that what it's about, right? He probably puts a lot of stuff back on you guys, right? Like you guys are leading stuff and get stuff going. That's really what we're hoping to go by the class. Very cool. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
This is great.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Oh, where's, uh, recording?
I'm right here.
Did you get pictures then?
I got pictures of them and we'd like to, you all want to do one up here with-
Yeah, let's do one with the IJAG, because then we've got, we've got another high school presentation to do too, so. IJAG students, come on up and with the school board, we're going to take a quick picture.
All right, guys, we're over here by the banner between the TVs. Oh. Got to be between the TVs.
Yep, you're good, you're good. You're the main deal here.
Perfect. We're good? Um, yeah. And we're smiling.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I put the shortest ones in the back.
You did that backwards.
When the high school students are here, they should be behind the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's all right. About the high school.
So we have part two? Yes.
Part two.
Ms. Myers, are you leading part two or who is my? No? No? That's it? CT was bringing some people.
Something else.
Okay. Um, I'm going to pause for a second. Greg, do we, do we need to take a short pause to try to get Mr. Ross connected?
He's connected.
He is, okay.
Yeah, that computer doesn't have internet, so he's going to listen. Turn on.
The board member joining virtually and I was having trouble, so I'll make sure Mr. Ross could be here. And the high school people, we know you've got a lot going on, so if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting, it's okay. All right? I know you've got a lot of things working.
Are you guys doing public comments?
Yes. Yes. And that, that's next. So moving into public comments, board and vice to the public to attend their meetings. Please come forward, give us your name and address. Comments are limited to five minutes or less. Anyone from the public wishing to speak this evening?
Hello, my name is Selena Jansons and I live at 1408 Course Street. Okay, I'm here to talk about the therapeutic learning classroom at Burlington Community High School. I am a senior at Burlington Community High School. I've been involved with a mental health group called Bring Change to Mind. We are a group that does a suicide awareness walk every year, along with speech and debate in GSA. I am advocating for TLC, therapeutic learning classroom, to not only remain a functioning class and outlet slash resource for students at VHS, but to also keep Amy Christiansen as a certified teacher in this classroom. Amy Christiansen is one of the most dedicated teachers I've ever met. She cares for students on a completely different level than others in this line of work. Although Ms. Christiansen would say it's not a competition, she is the epitome of kindheartliness. Every day during passing time, Ms. Christiansen stands outside her classroom and says good morning to everyone who passes her, either good morning or a compliment on their new shoes. She does this, and I quote, "because that might be the only good morning they get." Ms. Christiansen feeds any youth that comes through the TLC door. She understands not everyone has access to breakfast or does not have enough time for the, in the morning. Every morning I come into the TLC, she hands, she hands me a diploma holder with smack cards in it. They're cards. They are cards with motivational quotes on them and Ms. Christiansen writes more inspiring words on the back of these cards for me. This shows me that I, that I can not only graduate, but I will graduate with someone in my corner cheering me on every day. All of, all of the days I come in tired or down in the dumps, not feeling up to it, Ms. Christiansen was there to tell me, yes, you can. Here are the smack cards. She writes me one every day. I understand your thought process, that Ms. Christiansen could do all of these things while being elsewhere in the building. But to that, I would disagree. That one-on-one connection she is able to have in a TLC room is different from any other classroom environment. Still, it's not just about the connections, it's about logic. I have the understanding that counselors may be running TLC next year, if it comes down to it, if it comes down to it. While I've spent several days in the TLC, when Ms. Christiansen couldn't even take her lunch due to the counselors being too busy to watch TLC. At no fault of their own in the slightest, because they have a job, which is to be counselors, not the TLC teacher. Another thing I heard is that you will be taking, be taking a new teacher who has been there for only a few years and move him to subbing and give a teacher, Ms. Christiansen, who only has five years left, the new teacher's position as history, as a history teacher. When we are all at an, when we're at an all-time low shortage of teachers. You would not only be possibly losing a new young teacher, but also taking away one of the best supports some of these students have. Each and every one of these students has put their name down and said Amy Christiansen should stay in TLC. How many? 185 students. This was only from sixth period of the day in every class. I could have gotten more from first period, but sixth period was the only time I was truly available. I wasn't even available tonight. I had to call off of work to come here and express my deep concern for the way the TLC room may go without Ms. Christiansen. I didn't have time, but I made time because of how important this is to me. This is also important to those 185 kids. When Ms. Christiansen said you will change the world and you already are, she means it, because she changed my world. She was there for me when, with difficulties in foster care, with academic hardships and the death of my mother. This locket is from Ms. Christiansen. Inside is a picture of me and my mom. And with that, Ms. Christiansen and the TLC room is the only reason I made it through high school. She is the main reason out of many of a few, why I will be graduating on the 25th. I could not have done this without her in the TLC room. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Selena, I appreciate you. Yeah, I appreciate you being here this evening. In fact, I'm going to break protocol. I want to come over and shake your hand.
Okay. No, you're good.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
We can't really address.
Oh, yes, I understand.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public this evening? Okay, we will close that portion of the meeting, move to our student representative report. We have both of our representatives here this evening. Amy and Will, please come to the table.
Such a gentleman.
Good evening.
So one of the biggest things that's happened in the last two weeks is we had mini athletes go up to state track. So some of our biggest accomplishments were, we had Kylie Hill as the state champion for shot put. Miley Stiefel got six at state for the 100 meter. Our girls four by 100 got fourth at state. Our girls four by 200 got 16th at state. The girls sprint medley also got 16th at state. For the guys, Keishon Wildin got fourth at state for long jump. Solomon Cordero got 22nd at state for 110 meter hurdles. Shuttle hurdle relay got 23rd at state. Joey Jolene got 23rd for the 400 meter at state. Loderi Shilly got 15th at state for the 200 meter. Sharaya Hart got 15th at state for the 100 meter. Lilian Menon got 18th at state for high jump. And Kylie, Kylie Hill got fourth at state for discus. Um, we also had Morgan Wiley, Adrian Cable and Jamie Hillier making the Special Olympics state track meet. Some other sporting news, Lauren Briggs qualified for the 4A girls state golf tournament. Girl swim team sign up is May 27th.
Okay, um, the student council potluck picnic was today at 5:00. Um, the softball and baseball practices have already started. Senior award night is this Thursday at 7:00 PM. Uh, boy soccer has sub-state tonight at CCA. Girl soccer has sub-state tomorrow at home. The seniors' last day was last Friday. Um, the fall musical was announced at Maury Wright and it is The Wizard of Oz. Also at Maury Wright, we had our own Mrs. Myers conduct for the band and orchestra and choir, so that was exciting.
How did, how did that go? Was that on schedule? Was it a little fast? She got a little excited during the?
Maybe I should, I shouldn't talk right now.
She had a nice flourish. She had a nice flourish.
Was it a cool, okay, I just, right, some people said it kind of got a little speeded up, sorry. I just wanted to, wanted to student in perspective.
Graduation is May 25th.
We also had the student council annual trip. Last week, they went to St. Louis and they visited the city museum and dark.
All right, questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Next up is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of $221,176.56. Unpaid bills in the amount of one, I'm sorry, $1,362,153.16. P card purchases, BMO Bank in the amount of $53,670.99. And gifts in the amount of $1,585.14.
Thank you, Ms. Edberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vans. There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Any abstaining? Motion carries. Next up, items for discussion, leading off with the ESAR and SAVE monthly status report. See, we have our excellent representatives, Tom Nelson, Joe and Tim are here this evening.
Seems like we were just here, so we'll be brief. ESAR hasn't changed a lot since the last report. Still closing it out and testing. Interesting, the students have budgets, we have budgets, right? Everybody's got limitations still, but we're in a good shape on, same on the ESAR budget where we've been. Any questions about ESAR? Report should have been reported back. No questions on that. And the SAVE project, really getting a lot of planning work done for this summer. Very, very heavy schedule. We've been talking about all the interruptions at the high school, but I think it got real here in the last couple of weeks. So we're, one of the big things was the power outage in the high school is, is extensive or more extensive than what I hoped it would have to be. Some of this has to do with how the electric gear is set up and that we can't make wire terminations in it while it's hot and do that safely. So that causes us to have more outages than what we hoped. Probably three or four weekend outages that will interrupt the data com system in the whole district. We were hoping for one. I thought we could get this done in one and then make terminations later, but that's not possible to do. Uh, so we'll schedule those in advance and it'll be on weekends. But we'll have three or four of those. Just to give you a kind of a scope of, it's been, it's been in a lot of time here in the last couple of weeks and I met with Jay Huff, because this is interrupting obviously a lot of his summer activities. And, and so there's, there's actually, just to give you an idea of the scope of what's going on, there's, there's 81 electric panels that have to be replaced in the building. We've gone through every panel, what every panel does, what's impacted from every one of those 81 panels. And some of these are, this panel feeds that panel, feeds that panel. So when that one goes down, that one goes down. It's kind of a matrix of problem. But we've divided those 81 panels up into nine priorities. And so we're working now with the electricians. So once the power goes down on the seventh, by the end of that weekend, the data network will be back up. Either, well, some of it on temporary wiring, some on permanent wiring. But the data com network that runs the whole district will be up by Monday morning at 6 o'clock. And, but basically, other than the construction zones in the high school, then it'll be black in the high school. And then we will bring on the power back up in nine sequences of these nine priorities. And just to give you a flavor for that, obviously the first priority is to bring the whole data com network back up, which is a two to three day outage that weekend, which we're shooting for the seven, eight and nine right now. But we're meeting with Alliant tomorrow to get all the fine details, because Alliant's involved in this. They have, they're replacing a transformer during the first outage. So there's a lot of work that has to be done by Alliant also. But even if we can't get that down seven, eight and nine, we will do it on a weekend. But we will still cut power to portions of the building and start work on those portions, even if Alliant, Alliant can't get it done that weekend. So the process will start and there'll be a lot of power out, starting on the seventh regardless. That gets past the teacher workdays, you know, and basically we're in summer. The building should be essentially unoccupied at that point, other than construction. We are going to power up the firearm system. The city didn't necessarily require- The city didn't necessarily require that if there was no student occupancy, but we think that we, or we don't think, we know, we're going to power the fire alarm system up so that it is active. And the sprinkler system's active, because we think that the risk of a fire in the building is probably higher during the construction period than it is in the school period. So, just for the purposes of life safety and property protection, we're going to keep the fire alarm system up through the summer. And we'll wire that into a power that will remain up, except for these intermittent interruptions. So, anyway, there's priorities, starting with the data com, obviously. Then, then we move to getting in a position to use the gym. But to use the gym without air conditioning, so that would be step one. Step two would be to get the air conditioning back on, so that we can ventilate and cool the gym. And then, kind of fourth step's the pool in general, get it back up and powered up. And then, fifth is the music area. There's a band camp on August 4th. So, the fifth priority is the music areas that will, the plan is to have it back by August 4th, so that that can occur in the building. And then, then the next step is powering up the new administration offices, so that they can get moved in and function there. So, they're going to be at Stone this summer, but, you know, then come August, we'll try to get them back in the building, so that they can get moved in and get acclimated to their new space before students arrive. And then, it kind of dominoes after that. The last priority is the industrial arts building. We're going to do that. I'm not saying we're doing it last, but it'll finish last. Because there's a lot of work in the industrial arts building. So, that's kind of a flavor for what's going on. We've got water shut off to the building. We're replacing the service to the building on the 10th of June. And it'll be just like this electrical, where we take the whole thing down and then we start bringing up parts of the building as we get those elements of it done. And so, I don't have that as detailed right now. Didn't seem to be as critical, but we're going to have a similar prioritization of bringing it back up. The pool actually is on a separate water meter and we're not impacting the cold water in the pool. But interestingly, the hot water for the pool building comes from the main building, so it'll be off. So, it's a twisted web of problems to solve.
People listening to the recording, the power, I'll use the CTE bill as example. You turn that power off on June 7th. Is it off until potentially August 7th?
Yes.
Now, it's not going to come back up on every, either weekend. That's why people, I don't want them to think that if we have a weekend, it's just down. It's just down.
So, there's nine priorities and until we, and so, we're now meeting tomorrow again. We're going to try to put some target dates on priority one through nine. They're not going to be cast in stone, but at least a plan as to when is one going to be done. Well, one's going to be done in three days, I know that. But when is two going to be done, three, four, five, six? But these are in the order of the priority of the administration of the school and what they need to get up sooner versus later in that. So, we'll be working it in the priority of the needs of the occupants of the building. But yes, it will be off from the 7th until the end of that priority stage. Those pieces will be off, because they'll be working on those.
Other questions I got was, but the baseball and softball fields are not impacted because it's on a different part, which means, here's an example, our softball kids are coming back and it's 12 o'clock at night. The coaches have an app on their phone, they just click that and all of a sudden, they pop on the softball lights. So, it's lit up when the people are going to their cars.
The track, the baseball field and the softball field are all on separate services. Actually, our construction trailers are on with the softball fields. That's by design, because we knew this was going to happen. And so, we put our power on something else other than the building, so we wouldn't get interrupted ourselves. And obviously, we've got to keep the construction zones operating. Another thing that's not interrupted power-wise are the cottages north of the building. They're on their own service. So, we're not interrupting the cottages up there. Unfortunately, we're interrupting their data service because of, that data weaves through the building and the switches that are in the building that are operating that won't have power. Now, if it's necessary, we will power up those switches with temporary wiring. If we need to do that to keep data in the cottages, because I know Jay Huff's going there and I think Brian Johnson may be going there. Administration, I understand, is going to Stone, so that isn't an issue. There's a possibility they'll operate on, what is it? Wireless devices. Hotspots, yeah. Because their data requirements are pretty limited. And so, it might be easier to do that than it is to try to power up all these networks that we're not normally going to power up. But anyway.
I think the hotspots will work.
We do also, we're not planning on this. We're planning to do it all, have it all done by the time school starts. But we do have contingency plans that if we get close and we aren't going to make it, we're going to, we're going to wire back up. We're not tearing it all out on the first day. So, we're going to take it in sequences. And so, if we get in trouble and we can't get there, we'll put the old system back into operation. Then we'll figure out how we get it done. But, you know, if that happened, maybe we would have to go in on winter break and take another outage and try to finish up the last pieces. But that is not the plan. But we need to have a contingency plan, because the chances of something going wrong is not impossible. So.
The other question that I got was about the pool and you said the pool, the cold water's still running, but our own tech checks the pool twice a day for the balance, pH, whatever the balance is, whatever it's like. They're required to check it twice a day.
Unfortunately, until the end of phase four, or priority four, we won't even have pumps to circulating water to the pool. So, that, and then, I should have this up, I can't remember when the, yeah. Well, priority four, once we bring the pool back up, we will be able to heat the pool after priority four. So, when the pool essentially becomes back in operation, it will be able to be, it will be able to be heated. Because it gets heated off the central heating system in the building. So, we have to have the main mechanical room back up to heat the pool.
So, I just know there were concerns about our athletes coming back late at night. I know about the pool, something from a dozen years ago or something like that, where there was a situation with both those. Do you remember that spot?
Yeah, the parking lot lights, the pole lights that are on the sidewalks around the building, the lights on the exterior of the building, all will be impacted by this. And they are not the last priority to get the parking lot lights back up, but it's, it's.
But we have other means of lighting those areas for safety concerns. Because we can use the baseball lights and we can use the softball lights. Because you said those are not.
In the back, but not in the front.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But the athletes are most.
But the athletes.
Mostly are back.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
They would be safe over there. Yep.
That's where we, so I met with Jay and so, we talked about where those students need to park at, because that's where we want their cars. And we talked about by the transportation.
Sure.
By the softball field.
Sure.
For the bus.
So, the transportation facilities will not be impacted either by the power outage. They have their own power. And they will only be impacted for data when the whole district is impacted.
Okay.
So, they'll be just like the rest, just like this building. When we interrupt the data for outages, it'll interrupt district-wide. Otherwise, transportation will be just like this office. It'll be on the same, it'll be up, basically. So, that's kind of a summary. Budget-wise, no big changes on SAVE. Processing a lot of changes. And just fixing stuff and some enhancements and various things. Takes a lot of time. We are, Mark Hall, who's been our project supervisor on the job, he's retired at the end of May, so we have a new supervisor coming in. His name is Jake Woods. He's coming, he's not on the job yet. He'll be there the day after Memorial Day to work with Mark for a week. And if we need, I'm sure Mark will come back and help. But Jake is coming off one of the schools that we just finished in Fort Madison. So, he's familiar with working in districts and is capable, he's been with our company 20-plus years. So, he's a senior guy. And been with us a long, long time. And of course, Will's on the job doing most of the work. Will had a baby here in the last week, so.
Oh, wow.
Baby was a little bit of a bang, a little early and everything, but both mom and little girl are doing good, so.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
So, anyway, we're working hard to serve the district here. We've got lots of challenges in front of us, but I think we've got a plan to get it done. So, any other?
Appreciate the hard work.
Other questions?
Brian Bros is with us and he just wanted to pass along, he appreciates your hard work and diligence, working out these complex details. He notes it's a critical moment for the project. And we appreciate your diligence with those power conversions.
Yeah, glad to do it. It's interesting.
Nice choice of words.
We are pursuing now phase four and five, starting on the, essentially, the 3rd of June. So, we're going to pursue those phases simultaneous. It potentially can move the end date up to a certain degree, but the last phase has work in it that has to be done in the last summer. So, even if we got ahead of schedule, there's some work that we can't push into the spring of '25, because it has to be done in the summer. So, but still, work, like I always say, work done doesn't get undone. So, if it's done, then you don't have to worry about it. So, we're going to just push forward as far as we can. And it does mess up potentially the switchovers related to the trimesters and that. There's a lot of details that we've got to get worked out here, but with regard to accelerating that one phase. But that's able to be done, because the school is not going to be using those classrooms that are in the phase five area anyway in the fall. They're not scheduled to be used, so we might as well get going and get that phase moving, so.
Summer is over, then you're just going to be home free, right?
Exactly. Of course, we're doing the tennis courts. We're doing the gym roof this summer. We're doing the front canopy. You know, when the school starts in the fall, the entrance will be from the south. No more east primary entrance, the secure entrance, the student entrance, all that stuff will be done. So, that'll kind of flip the school over as far as.
Kind of where the pool, the pool building is, that first row right there will be parking. It'll be a handicap parking, visitor parking will be right there. So, that part of Brighton number, take care of that.
No, actually, that's part of the project. We're restriping that.
That area, you are?
I think we're doing that. We're dealing with some handicap accessibility issues to get from the handicap parking to the main entrance of the school that will now be on the south. So, that'll be an accessible way. And we'll be doing some curb cuts and I think we're restriping part of the parking lot as a part of this. All the handicap stuff, yeah. So, yeah, it's going to dramatically improve the accessibility of the school and the security of the school. I mean, that's part of the project.
I want to make sure that I visit with you guys on that, just because there's some thoughts about, a couple of handicap spots closer by where the tennis courts are then. So, maybe there's some there and some farther down in between the visitor parking, so we'll talk about that later.
Okay.
Well, I move to approve the ESR and SAVE monthly status report. Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional comments or questions? Lot going on. We really do, I know you hear it, but we really appreciate all the diligence and all the focus and effort that you're putting into this. It's going to be a fantastic project. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Will.
Congratulations.
Good luck. He doesn't need to sleep very much. Sleep lightly.
Next up is the Teacher and Para-Educator Registered Apprenticeship Agreement Addendum. Greg, you've got that one, okay?
Yeah, so, once again, the state's issued an addendum for the Teacher, Para-Educator Apprenticeship Program. The main thing they did is they just, the state was using RSM as the entity in which to submit claims for reimbursement. They've in essence removed RSM from the process, which will simplify the reporting claim for the program. Because with Cassie, we only have one claim left to submit, so it'll just make it easier to get it approved. So, the other items they noted or highlighted in the addendum have no impact on the program or anything that we're doing. So, she just said it'll, wouldn't have to do it, but it'll make things simpler for her. So, we can make things simpler. We should do it.
I see no problem with that.
So, we are, we're starting another two year?
Nope, this will be the last. We got the eight Para-educators graduating this year and this is the end.
That's it, okay.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve Teacher and Para-educator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Board Policy 503.4, Student Eligibility and Extracurricular Activities, second reading. Mr. Scott, you had that one?
Yep, I think we went through the areas that you had talked about, you had a typo that was here. We, correct, there's one thing I want to draw your attention to. On page two, there was, we talked about the consecutive calendar days and it was on here as 30 going to 20, and then I thought that was incorrect as 30. Actually, within the last month and a half, they actually did change it to where it is only 20 consecutive calendar days. So, student athletes only sitting out for 20 days now instead of 30. I talked to Jay about that. So, what you had in the paperwork on the first reading was actually right, where it says 20. It is only 20 days. And so, that gets kids back. And then, we made the adjustment at the bottom, where we talked about 12 credits for the junior and 30 credits for the senior to be academic eligible. A little bit, it's not part of the policy. It's not going to impact the homeschool, but Jay is still trying to get some clarification on the homeschool that they're impacted by this. And quite honestly, he's having to go to a couple of places to try to find the answer, because they don't have anybody contesting that for the state as far as being able to have homeschool kids eligible to play. And so, when I get more information of that, I will share with the board, but we're waiting for the state to give him some guidance back on that.
But at least for now.
He doesn't, he doesn't believe that this will impact them.
With the blue sentence in there.
Yep, okay.
Sounds good.
That was a little bit. I was, if there was something else, I, I think we changed the language.
I saw that.
Did you put it?
Yes.
That's helpful.
Nice catch.
Put it in there, Will. And, did I say I'm missing something else that was a big adjustment? Nope, I think everything was, yeah, okay. Okay, any questions then?
No, that's good.
Is there a motion?
Shall we? Second.
And any additional comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the 2024-2025 Registration Fees. Mr. Johnson's making his way to the table.
Yep, in your pocket, you have last year's fees compared to this year's fees. Pretty much everything had approximately a $5 increase and that's just kind of general cost of doing business increase. The only thing that was beyond that was, well, a couple of things that were noted. One, I think, one thing that was beyond that was high school yearbook. And that was based on actual costs. So, we looked at actual costs. We had a contract renewal starting for next year. So, looked at the actual cost for the contract renewal compared to the rates of selling books for the last, I think we looked about a three-year average, along with sponsorship averages for those three years. So, that was an increase based on the actual cost. And if you did notice, there was one typo near the bottom of the page that did not impact the fees. It was a typo in one of the headings. We've got that fixed. So, ending the one typo in the heading, we'll get that fixed, but it didn't impact the actual fee amounts.
I think they made.
And we got them revised for.
They did revise.
Oh, you did.
Yes, yes, we got it. It was sent out and explained that there was a typo, so thank you. So, yearbook was at cost, you said?
The increase was based in the, a true cost comparison, right, so.
We don't do our own yearbook?
No, we, our students do the work. But this is the cost of actually publishing the book. So, we buy the, so the students do the layout through a program provided by the publisher. But we have to pay a fee to the publisher to use them. And then, we actually, and then the actual printing production cost to the publisher as well.
Okay.
And there's a minimum, that contract comes with a minimum.
So, it's a wall's worth of, I know, we're not with Justin's, we're not with.
But that contract comes with a purchase minimum, so we know that we're going to be paying at least this amount every year.
It probably should have been adjusted.
It probably should have been adjusted two years ago.
A couple of years ago.
You know, and then another adjustment, so we just catch up, catch up to make sure we're not going into the hole for cost.
I didn't realize that it was outsourced, so, sorry. Ignorant, sir, I thought it was done all in-house.
Well, it's because the kids are always taking the pictures and doing all the.
Yeah, well, kids do all.
Do all the work.
Kids do the labor, kids do all the work.
Yeah, I was thinking the printing and everything was done, but.
Professional.
I don't know why.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the Registration Fees.
Second.
Motion in a second, any additional comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is the Tyler Technologies Transportation Software and Hardware Agreement. Mr. Reynolds has that one.
Yeah, so the current software that we're using, Versitrans, which is Tyler Technologies, we have a three-year agreement for that software, which is, we're approaching the three-year agreement, so as we've done with most of our software, we're looking at moving it, the software has been housed in-house through our own servers, we would like to move that to the cloud, as we have with most other softwares that we have in the district. I just, one, provide some ease in updating the, the software through the next couple of years of agreement, as they'll be in charge of that and we don't have to worry about if our server fails or those things, it'll be on the cloud, so we can access it basically from about anywhere, we won't have to be in district sending it on our computers in-house to get the software, so. Several components to the, to this package, you know, we have the routing software itself, we also have the GPS systems that are part of this package and then the student system, the student app that we're still working to get implemented. So through this transition and movement into the cloud, we'll reduce or eliminate some of the issues we've had getting, you know, the students app part of this program working, so. Also, as part of this, you'll know, tablets that we've had are now obsolete, so even though they're just three years old, they're no longer will operate with this new system, so we need to update and replace those twenty-eight tablets as part of this, so. So two components, one, the software portion of that, getting it moved in-house, it takes, unfortunately, about six months for them to build the system and build all the maps, so it is probably, they're saying anywhere from six to nine months, I'm hoping it's six before we can get this conversion done, but. So asking the board to approve this new software agreement, it is a, is an annual agreement, it's just for one year and then it renews every year thereafter, so.
So outside.
So moved.
Outside of the, the student part of it, the badges, we would be renewing this anyway because we were run, it was the end of the cycle, the three years, so this is no different than updating any software, this is just the year and now we're going to the cloud, which is another step we're taking with the remodel.
I will second Mr. Bros's.
Okay, he made the motion.
Yep, he made the motion, I will second. And then I do have another question.
Sure.
The cost of the repairs, if, if there's a repair or there's a malfunction in equipment, does Tyler Technologies come and fix it?
It's probably going to depend, you know, there's probably limited warranties on the tablets, which you're referring to, so, you know, if we break it, it's on us. If, if the component itself has a tablet itself, we just have to look at the, it's probably like most things, there's a very little short warranty.
What about the software that's on their program?
Software's on them, so software beyond them, yeah, right.
So basically, it could take nine months to implement it and we're just renewing it for a year.
Yes, so we'll continue to use the system that we have now until we get.
We finally got everything working except the badges, is that correct? That was really difficult to give that point.
Most, most of those issues are trying to get our internal software to communicate with.
So this should fix it.
This should eliminate.
I hope that works.
Or will eliminate, we've, there's been a couple of districts that we spoke with, they're thrilled with it. Terry, Scott and I sat through a, a meeting with, with Tyler Technologies where they presented it's now a fully integrated package, which is a great, used to be with three different components and that was very nice, we tried to get it all talked together, so this is one integrated package, they're thrilled with the new system, so they're excited about it.
But it routes our buses, right, which is a great system, we actually can see the location of our buses at all times, wherever, whether, weather, we can see them at all times, it's just that third component is what we need to get to, right?
Right, yep. Okay, any additional comments or questions? So have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is the ASME Agreements and Handbooks. Ms. Johnson's going to take it.
Yes, good evening, so yes, we did have a chance to go through negotiations with ASME and it went very well. All the groups have taken it back and have ratified, so this is the second year of a two-year agreement and it's a three percent wage increase for this next school year and then of course the updates you can see are in red, but the recommended action would be to approve the agreements and handbooks as presented.
So this covers Associate Secretaries, Groups, Custodians.
And Custodians.
And Food Service.
Yes.
I move that we approve the agreement and handbooks as presented.
Motion, sir?
Second.
Motion.
It has been ratified by the union also.
Okay. Motion in a second, any additional comments or questions?
Due to a conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from voting.
Understood.
While I support what's going on, I will abstain.
Understood, we respect your decision.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And abstaining.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the Burlington Riverfront Entertainment Agreements. Who's got that one?
Greg. Yeah, we'll take that, so, yeah, this is agreement with Burlington Riverfront to use the auditorium for professional development, which is scheduled on June fourth.
This is two things, this is one, I sent you something in the board notes about the professional development doing for AI for Education on the fourth and then the fifth is more of Cassie has that, the group for the Montana Institute is coming in and presenting to our teachers on work that we've done in the past, but we're revisiting that and trying to use in the opportunity of the PD day we have before August, so it's a good opportunity to get that and of course, it's a great environment down there and excited about having them come in.
And this is something we did extra with the makeup days.
With the makeup days, it was, it was allowed us to.
Maybe it's an option.
Actually, I've been working for it pretty hard because normally, he's, you know, having a clue, all this planning at the beginning of the year, now he gets to do it in June and then he gets to do it again in August right away, so, just the.
Go Cory.
Go Cory.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional comments or questions?
I just thank the Burlington Riverfront Entertainment for being so flexible and working with us and we've had several different events and they're very easy to work with, so I just appreciate their, their support as a community entity.
Very true. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up Superintendent's Report, Mr. Scott, what do you have for us this evening?
I've got more than a few things, whatever I wanted to get to. I don't see anybody until June seventeen, so, first of all, communications, we did send out, talked about the high school and also Aldo, it has some construction going on with, we're resealing the windows over there, but, so you'll see a lot of construction, so the community may see that. We're sending a message out to our staff today, they would have got an email and then, so, we're going to send out to the community probably on Wednesday. We typically do that, we give it to our staff and then we wait a couple of days and then the community will give it out to them, so. Most of Aldo will be closed down just because of the windows being taken out and we don't know how they're going to work their way through, but the gym actually is one area where they're not taking the windows out, so the gymnasium may be used over there at times, right? And so they'll have that totally worked out, the same thing as you talked about tonight with the high school, most of the high school is going to be closed, you're not going to see people in there except for if they're parking and using the weight room and then maybe hopefully into the gym and then maybe hopefully into the pool, but that's pretty much going to be the extent of where we're going to see people in there and just because of that programming that we need to happen, have happened. Of course, we got to hear IJAG tonight present and we know we're at the nine-ten and as I think I told you in the board notes, at no cost to the district, we're, we're being able to add the eight-nine program at Stone for next, or seven-eight program at Stone next year and that gives us an instructor for the next two years at no cost to the district at all. And so, you know, that's just going to continue to build that and then there's no obligation to our, by that point, two years, we can decide it was a great fit for us or we can decide to move on. I hear in the success stories of there, I just think it's probably something that's going to be, just continue to grow for us and be a great opportunity, it's very minimal cost, even if we do keep the program at the end of the time, so. Couple of things, I attended the, I think I may have talked about this, but I attended the Stone Student Showcase, just all the work, amazing work that was done all throughout the building, every student worked, whatever, I'm, I'm sorry, throughout all the floors and it was just, I think they did a little video too and actually showed a little bit kind of on Facebook if you saw that, whatever, and so that was, that was really cool to see how much the kids, the work the kids put into that. Visited the Art Center, got to see some great work down there that was on display, not only from our high school, but from the homeschool students who were down there, just really some good stuff that could be sold to make some money, but it was, it was nice stuff. Attended a Build My Future event over at SCC, where kids were hands-on doing, they were cutting wood and doing welding activities. I, I, when you pulled up to it, you kind of just saw there was like a handful of people and once you got in there, you just saw all the different, they were devices and how they trained to do a backhoe and, and pull things out and any number of construction things, so what a, what an amazing event that our kids get to see to kind of think of, oh, I think I may want to do that for a job in the future. So kudos to Brian Johnson and everybody that is around organizing that. I heard earlier that participated in the, the awareness around Preventing Suicide Walk that was at Bracewell, Down to the River was a big turnout, good, really a, great, you know, great to see that when people rallying around, trying to just tell everybody that there's another choice, you know, you know, if you get to those tough times, talk to somebody, right? It was a little bit easier to walk down the hill than it was back up the hill, but that's a different topic, so. I attended the Grimes Camp out at the Girl Scout Camp Friday night, boy, they had just a busload of people, had cars just packed everywhere out there, kudos to Tim Craddock and his entire leadership team of getting that going again and just with so many people doing out there, all kinds of different events and the one thing they were making, the one thing I remember was they were making slime where they were blue and all this other stuff and it was, I just was like, is that really, and then slow but sure, they started figuring out, it was, it's pretty cool, it was a pretty neat event, I didn't do that one, but it was, it was really nice. Tomorrow, I'm excited about, we're kind of bringing back the Spelling Bee and when I say we, Stephanie is doing, most stuff is doing most of the work and, but we've had competitions at all the schools and for our fourth graders and then we'll have the competition here tomorrow at two o'clock to figure out our district winner who then, if they choose to, can advance actually to the State Fair and participate in that if they want to. So we were looking at different, there's, you know, two or three different Spelling Bee, you know, kind of programs or whatever and we felt like something that endorses in the state was the one and I'm, I'm pretty excited about myself, whatever, and I kind of wanted to get it going, last year we didn't happen, so I kind of, Steph ran with it and thank you for everything she's done to get that.
Sounds like Mr. Scott wants to participate.
I wasn't very good at Spelling Bee, that's why I was, I was, I was out in round two early, so.
We can have some words for it.
You were pretty excited there, I was really missing out.
I was out in round two, yeah. Math problems put me down there in the chart, we'll run a math contest. Other things, attended, of course, the, the concert, whatever, at the Memorial Auditorium, which was, I mean, you know, just so much good work going on down there and that just a neat event and the rain actually held off for me to get there, on the way out a little bit, on the way out. The electric, electricity outage at the summer, I had a note to talk about that, that is going to be a huge deal and I don't want to minimize it at all, it's going to really impact us from everything that we're offering, families, students, you know, athletes are going to have to be understanding. We know at the end of the day, this is really going to be great because now we're rewiring the entire school basically, you know, with the most updated material and that's for us, we know the importance of it, but when you're a sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kid and you're like, why not just leave it the way it is, right? Well, you gotta do it right now, do it next weekend, right? And it has to happen in the summer, but I just, you know, I do appreciate everybody understanding that and as much as they can because just, it needs to happen, the life of the building is just setting it on track where nobody's going to worry about that for thirty to forty years then, so we'll be in good shape. A couple of things we've been doing, some instructional walkthroughs and got through the schools and I just want to share a couple of the, I mean, there's been so many good things, I, that would take me thirty to forty minutes to, to talk about everything, but, for example, we were at Sunnyside, things that we saw, and again, we had all the elementary principals and, and two curriculum, curriculum director, assistant curriculum director with us and we actually, the Vibe principal was with us, but students, like at Sunnyside, students were engaged and assigned on task, they, and again, I'm just giving you a few good use of questioning by the teacher to engage the students. Some of the things that we saw at, at Aldo were common, expectations were posted in all the rooms, teachers used, using, use of questioning and prompts, student engagement was high, the students were on task. Oh, and the routines, I'm sorry, the, another one was, at Sunnyside, the routines were really clear throughout, so the kids knew exactly what they were supposed to do, what they prompted to do, different activities, they knew exactly what was happening. Grimes, we were there, it was warm, inviting classrooms, the classrooms, I really enjoyed, there was a lot of classrooms, they had pictures of actually the students to make it more like a family display, there was positive teacher talk and praise, really calm environment where teachers, teacher voice. When we visited Stone, there were lots of student work that I talked about in the hallway, we honestly, and we did not see a cell phone out during the entire visit at Stone and it was actually, we saw one right outside the office where a kid, but in no classroom, we just commented, like, there wasn't one cell phone and it was, it was great to see they were on task. And then, one, a couple of teachers were referencing back to the previous day's assignments, trying to connect where we're at yesterday, we're moving forward and these are in, all these great things we're seeing are in five-minute visits, we're visiting each classroom for five minutes and whatever part of the lesson, could be the beginning of the lesson, middle of the lesson, end of the lesson and it was just so refreshing as a leader because you're walking through there just going, it, it is May, second week of May and, and kids are just rolling and teachers are rolling and we're pushing out curriculum and the great things are happening, they're following the curriculum that has been provided by the district, so it was, they were good days and I'm glad we did it and we had to pull principals out and talk about some different things and then finally, we got through North Hill also and at North Hill, there was strong structures and routines and transitions, evidence of common lessons, so like example, if we walked into one first grade classroom and across the hallway, they were teaching the exact same lesson, they were maybe within, you know, we were seeing almost the same thing, which was great for our PLC work and then to get positive teacher talk, praise and reinforcement. I just took the time today, but I know it's kind of talking really fast, trying to share, but it's just, I wanted to say that all the great things our teachers do every single day, right, that just happens and this is just a Tuesday or a Wednesday or a Thursday in the middle of May and we're walking in and, and kids are just rolling with their, what they're getting, the teachers are just doing their work, so. Kudos to everybody out there on our staff that do it every day and, and make the kids feel like they are part of a family, that's what we saw. In connection with that, part of our family was missing last time when we gave out our school board member thank yous and so hopefully she listened to my recording, you know, because I think I did a great job of saying how welcome or how thankful we are to have you on the board and, and everything that you have because, again, the pay's not great, right? And, and the, and the time takes you away from your family and other events you have to have, but, you know, we really appreciate you dedicating your service because, as I said the last one, our board does a great job of continuing to push the envelope to do what's best for kids and, and, and it's amazing that we're, that the board is so connected with the community, which then I think helps us bring resources into our students, so. At this point, if you come up, we'll get a nice picture. We're supposed to do an official handshake or whatever, that's what Cory likes. Got it?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, we won't, we may have to, for a couple of business items, we may have we may have to have a meeting on May 30th, but we're kind of working that out right now. But we'll post something if we end up having it. If not, our next board meeting is not till June 17th. But if we have to have one next week, we'll get that out there and post it on the website, make sure everybody's aware of it. Mostly it's for business activities, things like that, that we can't wait until the 17th to get done. As I said, I had a long list and hopefully if I miss something, I apologize. But it's been a good May and we got, what, eight days to go for students? Or nine days to go for students and then some really good PD for the staff. I'm excited about the PD for the staff at the end, I am. I think we're really are valuing their time, right? As I committed to the B, I said I didn't want to just have days just to have days, right? We want to give you some, I think we do have some really good resources for them.
I think, I think they both sound like really, pretty interesting days.
Yeah.
So. Any other comments for Mr. Scott? I will say I have had several teachers and staff tell me about the walkthroughs. They really have enjoyed seeing the administrators in the buildings doing that. So and somebody said, that's never happened in 20-some years.
We're gonna be more organized, we're gonna, it's gonna be more often next year, but we just, I appreciate that.
Yep, nope. Next up, committee report. I don't think we have anything for committees tonight. Brings us to board communications. Mr. Vance.
I've got to say, I was fortunate to attend the Aldo Spring Concert and the Fourth and Fifth Spring Orchestra, those are both very nice. Took, my wife and I took our kids to the Grimes family camp, we had a good time. My kids definitely ate some marshmallows from the building activity, but I think they learned some stuff too, so that was fun. I want to say thanks to the IJAG students for coming in, telling us how they're experiencing that program and that they are feeling more prepared to take that next step into the real world after high school. That's amazing to hear. I hope they continue pushing that. And I hope they're telling their peers to participate in that if they get the chance. Congrats to the BHS high school track athletes going to state, that's good to hear. And I'm looking forward to commencement coming up, so.
Ms. Abber.
Well, speaking of concerts, there've been a lot of them and I want to thank Mr. Scott for caring.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I know you're a sports guy and I appreciate that. One more, tomorrow night at Stone Vocal Concert is at 7 o'clock. And I want to, I want to thank the young lady that spoke tonight for public comments. She spoke very eloquently and I think this is just an example of some of the fine students that we have at our school and staff, obviously had an impact on her. And Mrs. Christensen should be very proud of this young lady. Also, there are art teachers work on display at the art center now. I'm not sure of the dates, but I've seen at least some of Mr. Ernesto's work and I haven't been down this year, but in the past years, they do this every year. And Mr. Mulder's work, I've seen them before. So if you get a chance and you like that sort of thing, you might check that out. And I want to say just congratulations to all the seniors and we're real excited about graduation at Bracewell on Sunday.
Mr. Bros, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're up.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Scott for all the great record and thank him for being in the schools. I heard as well from the staff that they have been in there and I think that's great. Thanks for being all over the district. Frankly, I think I've seen you everywhere and I haven't been everywhere, but I've heard you've been everywhere. So thank you and thanks for staying on top of the S-Sur project with the power conversion. There was a lot of pieces to that, it's kind of gotten bigger than anybody anticipated, but no pain, no gain, we'll get through it, at least it's in the summer. So thank you for that and thank you all for accommodating my remote.
We're glad you're able to join us. Ms. Bergomper.
I was also gonna say thank you for your support of the music and the arts. Had several people, Mr. Scott's here. I know, it's amazing, you just love seeing your face around. Did you get a mix line?
My daughter did. Some of it went home on me.
Perfect. Well, I also went to the orchestra concert, I just love all of the music and hearing the progression through the years. Yeah, it's very exciting. Attended the talent show and Aldo Track Meet. And I just wanted to comment on both those events. I was totally impressed and blown away at our student body and how supportive they were of each other. And the cheering for every act and the excitement and even the track meet, they're running along the inside of the track, cheering them on as they were racing. I was just very impressed, so fun things to end the year on and be involved in.
Ms. Dick.
Well, I want to thank Mrs. Myers for her dedication to BHS and to our district overall. Tonight was her last board meeting, so happy retirement to her. Congratulations to all the state qualifiers, we were very well represented up there, which is, it was great to see. And the students loved supporting them. They had the ceremonies to send them all off and that, that was really neat to see. Proud of the change to mind class and everyone involved in that, that walk and listening to their stories and seeing it grow just from last year was incredible. A lot of community members that worked downtown had reached out and said, you know, the students were very respectful, it was great to see so many of them bringing something to light that they as an adult didn't really think much about until they started seeing all of these students walk. So while walking doesn't seem like a big thing, it got people talking, so that's great. Thank you to the student reps and their reports tonight and to the young lady that spoke earlier. It's intimidating to speak in front of adults, let alone a board of people. The IJAG is just an amazing program. I'm super excited for next year to have more of it going, to see more of our students succeed. Band and choir has, yeah, it's been orchestra, all of, all of the music. They play a lot in May, a lot in May, but they've done a great job. We have 24 eighth grade students that will be continuing band next year. So Mr. Murphy has got a lot of incoming kids, I'm not sure he's got that many outgoing seniors. So that band room is gonna become very small very quickly. But I hope everyone has a great summer, I'm looking forward to graduation, it's always a wonderful time.
Well, I think everything has been said. Let's see if I can come up with something.
Here.
Well, I saw you scribbling. Those are mine, okay.
They always take, they take your stuff away, by the time it gets to you.
I know. Off the press here, graduation reminder, yes, it is this Saturday at 7 o'clock at Bracewell. Cross your fingers, hope for the best. Fantastic venue for graduation. Bridging ceremony will be the 31st and that will be at, at the Memorial Auditorium. At Memorial Auditorium, at 10:30 in the morning. Yeah, graduation is always such an incredibly special day for so many people and families. And it's fun to see Bracewell fill up with, with everybody and it's nice to have the live streaming as well. I too, I want to thank the Ms. Jensen for speaking tonight. Very passionate, very good speech and we have some fantastic teachers. She definitely highlighted one and it's, sitting at this table is a very difficult thing to do, which we all know, we have to make some decisions that are very difficult in trying to find the best resource allocation for our resources, so. And that's what I said, we did hear what she said and we appreciated her being here. Congratulations to the boys and girls soccer teams, I hope that they continue to do well. And on that customer, I want to give a shout out to the city of Burlington for their foresight for the sensory playground. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to check that out, but that's a pretty cool thing for our community to do. And I know a number of our students will enjoy using that as well. We'll see everybody at graduation and I hope for good weather. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved?
Still saying.
Not yet. Oh.
Give Brian.
We'll recess and then go into closed session and then we'll adjourn after the closed session.
Okay, actually the closed session's been postponed.
Oh, okay.
I neglect, just now realizing, when you said that. Neglected to make that adjustment to the agenda due to the technology issues we were having. I didn't think, yeah, we are postponing that so that it's not happening this evening. So we will do a motion to adjourn.
Thank Brian.
Brian, I'll give it to Brian.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you.